Good evening everyone, welcome. We'll begin in just a few minutes. Just making sure that the microphone is working okay. For all of those who have difficulty hearing, please use a headphone if possible. Okay, but I look forward to studying with everyone today. And I hope all are well. Today we're going to be looking at Kyoshu-sama's Paradise on Earth message. Okay, along with the review from last week. So if you want to pull that up, we do have it available in our group. I'm not sure if you can look at both at the same time, but it is posted on our group here in the top post. I think it's the third or fourth post down. You're welcome to join from there and read from there. Or you can just read from the screen. We put it in the slides for everybody to read. So we'll begin in just a few minutes. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello Bonnie, how are you? Okay, the time is now 6:30. Let us begin the study session. As with all study sessions, let us invite all our ancestors, all those who are alive within us, to in the name of Messiah, which is one with Meshu-sama, return to heaven with us during this study session. So all the feelings, all the thoughts we have during the study session, let's take this opportunity to recognize that God is shining His light so that we are aware of those that we need to surrender, return back to heaven with in the name of Messiah. That way we may all be born anew as children of God, Messiahs. I'd like to begin with the sacred oath. Sacred oath. With great fear of God, we acknowledge that the Lord God is our true Father, the one and only God. We revere Meshu-sama as the model for all humanity and as our own example to follow. Meshu-sama who was born anew as a true child of God, the Messiah, by receiving the divine will that God accomplished in heaven. We believe that Jesus Christ, who 2,000 years ago embodied the name of Messiah, the name most holy and high, is serving the Lord God in unity with Meshu-sama. And we regard the messages of Kyoshu-sama who reveals to us the will of Meshu-sama in this material world as the soul, absolute and irreplaceable foundation in advancing our mission here on earth. Words of prayer. God, I acknowledge that you are alive. Within me, you are alive. I thank you for nurturing me to be newly born as your child. May this blessing be shared with all. In the name of Messiah, which is one with Meshu-sama, I surrender myself to you. Please use me as you wish. So today's study session, like I mentioned a few minutes ago, we are going to be looking into Kyoshu-sama's message for June 15th, the Paradise on Earth service. But I like for us to have a hymn in mind during the study session. And today's hymn that I chose was written by Kyoshu-sama in May of this year. And it says, "I tell you followers of Meshu-sama, the true joy is this: to surrender your son to God and serve in his divine work." So in this collection of hymns, Kyoshu-sama is very clear and goes deeper into the essence of joy and what joy is. So I'd like to keep this one in mind during the study session. One more time, "I tell you followers of Meshu-sama, the true joy is this: to surrender your son to God and serve in his divine work." So these past couple weeks, we've been studying about how to serve God. So actually that hymn fits in very well with our studies. The first week, we focused on how all creation was serving God for us to be born anew as God's children. And in the second week, we studied about illness and how to serve God through illness and what was Meshu-sama's take on illness. How did Meshu-sama truly see illness? So I'd like to do a small review from that study session last week. We looked at several hymns from Meshu-sama and they were, "Illness purifies one's body and spirit. It cleanses them. Oh God, there is no greater blessing than illness." The second hymn was, "Everyone do not be afraid of illness. It is a blessing from God that purifies the sins and defilement accumulated over the long years." The third hymn was, "I am overjoyed. I am cleansing this defiled land and am constructing heaven." So looking at the teaching from "Give thanks to illness," actually sacred word of Meshu-sama, "Give thanks to illness." There were several points that we studied. The first was the conventional perception of illness. So in this sacred word, Meshu-sama really focuses on our perception of the world and our perception of illness and how that actually is creating more suffering. So Meshu-sama says, "In society, there are expressions like fight against illness or tackle a disease. And they are used with the perception that to cure an illness or a disease, one must fight against and overcome it." And Meshu-sama states that this perception, needless to say, is completely mistaken. With this form of perception, feelings of anguish and impatience also arise. As a result, not only do you suffer from the illness, you now have the added suffering of wanting to remove those negative feelings that are also sufferings in themselves. And then Meshu-sama says in regards to his own point of view of illness, he says, "Now my theory is completely different. Illness, in my opinion, is a blessing from God. When you know this, a feeling of gratitude should well up within you. As for myself, I sometimes even wish for my illness or disease to be more severe." So Meshu-sama was showing us that because of our perception, we were creating more and more suffering in regards to illness. But how does this affect our state of mind? And I think that was the key point in this article that we were studying where Meshu-sama is really focusing not on the illness itself, but on our state of mind. And he says on that part, "So how does each one of us, I'm sorry, how does each one of these two interpretations of illness affect us mentally? On the one hand, the notion of fighting against illness engenders fear of illness as well as the agony of anxiety and impatience over it. On the other hand, regarding illness as a heavenly blessing produces gratitude, hope and enjoyment. You thus move forward one step into the realm of life's happiness." So Meshu-sama was teaching us that the essence for us to move towards a truly happy life into the realm of happiness depends on our state of mind. Whether or not we can understand the true essence of illness and all those challenges that come up in our daily lives. And on that note, he says, "How does this apply to everything in our life?" Right? And Meshu-sama goes deeper and he says, "Just imagine, what do you think will happen if all the Japanese people come to this recognition of the truth about illness? The answer is clear. As they come to realize that what has been the cause of the great anxiety is in fact something entirely opposite, all the Japanese populace will be able to go about their daily lives with complete peace of mind. Not only does work efficiency improve, the brightness of society will be extraordinary. In this way, I am convinced that Japan will become the heavenly isle of the 20th century." So Meshu-sama is teaching us that true peace of mind depends on our state of mind in regards to the world around us. And the things that give us the greatest anxiety are in fact something entirely opposite depending on our perception of that. So if we can truly perceive in essence why that is happening, then we can attain complete peace of mind and begin to really walk in this path of happiness. So I believe that as we concluded in last week's study, this not only, this does not only apply to illness. This applies to everything in our daily lives, all our problems, all our situations. If we can see that everything has an essence that is God and is a heavenly gift and God has a purpose for that and we learn to deal with that and learn to truly serve God in that way, we can truly achieve peace of mind. So it was a very powerful study in this sense and I recommend everybody to go back and refresh and reread these sacred words and hymns so that we can go deeper into that. But since we've been studying about how to serve God and part of that, on week one, we were studying also Kyoshu-sama's hymns regarding all of creation serving God. I would like to share and study with everybody today Kyoshu-sama's message in this Past Paradise on Earth service because it's very interesting. Many of the hymns are like the essence of the message this time. So it's a great opportunity for us to go even deeper and it's a fresh off the press translated material for us to really go deeper into our faith. So I'd like to look at that with everyone today. So I'm going to read the message and afterward we can have a few comments if we have a little bit of time or else we'll do it next week. It's not that long, it should take just about 10 minutes or so, but I'd like to read with everybody today. So Kyoshu-sama's message for the Paradise on Earth service that was held June 15th at the Atami Sacred Grounds. "Congratulations everyone on today's World Church of Messiah Paradise on Earth service. From this past beginning of spring Rishun service, you have taken a new path and decided to go forward with the name World Church of Messiah, the church that Meshu-sama founded seven years ago on the day of Rishun. You decided to truly inherit the will with which Meshu-sama founded World Church of Messiah in order to serve with heart and soul the divine work of true salvation. Since that monumental Rishun, four months have passed. I am sure that all of you were so excited to move forward in this new direction. But as you know, we were hit by the spread of the novel coronavirus and for that, you have not been able to carry out the activities you initially wanted to do. You now cannot hold services with thousands of attendees nor hold meetings or conferences. Even simply visiting or having a conversation with people comes with restrictions. In this way, our social life has been affected to a degree we never foresaw happening. Now, the whole world is under the influence of this novel coronavirus and we have all been thrown into confusion. Areas like politics and the economy, for example, are in a chaotic state too. Through all of this, it became clear to me that there must be something God wants us to realize from it. What could it be? What came to my mind first was how we have been deciding and doing things as if they were our prerogative, our right. We have been taking it for granted that we have the power and authority to carry out the activities we wish to advance. Needless to say, in truth, it was only through the permission of God that we were able to do what we did. I must confess to you that I took this, the permission of God, very lightly. God watches over us constantly. That is why we must communicate to God every time we decide something or do something. And after we have done something, regardless of whether the thing we wanted to do ended up in success or in failure, we must communicate everything to God, recognizing that He certainly worked within us for all of our deeds and thinking. This, I believe, is the correct attitude we should take toward God. Through the current situation of the world, I feel that God is working very hard so that we are able to realize the importance of turning our hearts to Him like this, even if just a little. What also came to my mind was this. Whenever we realize something or believe in something with joy and excitement, we want to tell the people around us as many people as possible about it. We even feel the need to tell others about it. To act in this way is of course necessary and extremely important. But at the same time, I think there is something we must be careful of. There are times when we feel overly proud of realizing and knowing the truth and then misunderstand, thinking that we are better than others and end up telling them what we realize and know as if we were superior to them, as if we possessed more knowledge than them. This attitude may prevent them from grasping what we are trying to say and instead of having a good influence on others, we may unintentionally put more burden on them. For a long time, we have lived our life not realizing the true purpose of life. We have lived our life not knowing that God, who is one and only, is our true Father and that we within us carry a soul named Messiah, the name given by God Himself. We have lived our life not knowing that it was a sin against God to regard our souls as our own. We have lived our life not knowing that this sin of ours, taking possession of God's souls, was atoned for and that we were brought to salvation as ones who were forgiven. We did not know that God was nurturing us together with many to be born anew as His children. Even though we have lived our life in this way, we were led to be awakened to the truth through Meshu-sama. We must etch this fact deep into our hearts. At the same time, I feel that to this day, God has been protecting us so that we would not become overly proud when communicating with people and would be able to remind ourselves that we are ones who were led to the truth only through the grace of God. As we encounter various situations due to the influence of the minute particles existing in the novel coronavirus, what came to my mind was our attitude toward all creation. In his hymn, Meshu-sama writes,[1745.76][1746.72]"Great is the blessing of the natural world. It turned a single invisible soul into a human being." The blessing of the natural world is the blessing of all creation. Meshu-sama through this hymn is telling us that even though the soul is our true identity, we are able to carry a physical body and a sense of self by the grace of all creation. In other words, we are able to have a sense of I only through the existence of all creation. All the elements, all the minute particles, all the cells... All the elements, all the minute particles, all the cells, the whole earth. And the whole universe, these are all parts of all creation. We and all creation are one with the body of God, who lives eternally and is one. It is only through the blessing of all creation that we can breathe, see, hear, feel. And think in this world. It is only through the blessing of all creation that we can turn our hearts to God and pray to him. Express our gratitude to him, return to him and surrender our feelings to him. In the beginning, all creation was with us in heaven. God entrusted his will, the will of making all humanity his children to all creation. And sent all to the earth. Therefore, what all creation wishes for is one. It wishes to help God fulfill his will, that is, it wishes for us to be born anew. As children of God, as Messias, just as Meishu Sama did. Our sense of I, that is, our consciousness is made up of all creation. And exists because of all creation. Even so, we have taken the will of God in the wish of all creation much too lightly. Rather, we only thought of all creation as something to fulfill our own desires. And to utilize in our lives. Politics, economics, religion, science and ideology. As well as culture and civilization. God prepared these in order to fulfill his will. But we have been regarding them as something to be used by human beings rather than by God. Now, let me say this. Our consciousness made up of all creation and the aspects of human life. Like politics, economics and so on, both are the end result. Of the first phase of God's creation. They are, in the words of Meishu Sama, things of the world of night. As Meishu Sama declared the end of the world of night. God put an end to the workings of the first phase of creation that existed within us. To be more specific, this means that God decided to extend his hand of mercy to us. Who dishonored him, he sent Jesus Christ to the world. Received the blood Jesus sacrificed as the atoning blood for our sins in the past. The present and the future, made us sinless and welcomed us into the world of beginning, heaven. And as Meishu Sama announced, the beginning of the world of day. God is now using us in his second phase of divine creation. That is, he is now welcoming many into his heaven and remaking all creation anew. Through us, whose sin against God has been forgiven. In fact, God has been exercising this power within us to this very day. We just did not know it. That is why God has caused all the current circumstances in the world to emerge. Or rather, he has caused all kinds of human thoughts and feelings to emerge. Through the current seeming confusion in the world. You may feel that since we cannot carry out our activities in full swing now. Divine work has slowed down, but this is definitely not the case. With the grace and authority, God is now exercising his power. In full swing within us. He is now extending his saving hand to all the people in the world. Whose hearts are filled with anxiety and worry. God is now ministering his Joray to us, welcoming everything into his hand. Through forgiving all of what humanity has committed to this day. God is now remaking all creation anew. Within us, the forgiveness of God exists. This forgiveness of God is the foundation of the divine revelation of the transition from night to day. Within us, the church bearing the name of Messiah exists. This church atones for, purifies, saves and revives everything. Let us recognize that the forgiveness of God and the church bearing the name of Messiah exist within us. Let us, by each one of our own wills. Accept the forgiveness of God embedded in the name of Messiah, just as Meishu Sama did. Let us, together with many people and all creation, return to heaven. And surrender all into the saving hand of God, for now is the time to serve in this work. Within us, God's hand of Joray exists. There is not a single moment when we are not used in God's divine work of Joray. Meishu Sama wrote the following hymn, the voices of the members burst out from their sincere hearts. Do they have the power to influence and change the world? Of course they do. Through this hymn, I feel that Meishu Sama is telling us with a stern voice. Doesn't the voice of God coming out from his sincere heart? Have the power to influence and change the world? Of course it does. Our hearts are changeable, always mixed with good and bad thoughts. But that is not all that we have. Within us, at the center of each one of our consciousnesses. The sincere heart of God exists, his true heart exists. No matter what, God will save us. No matter what, God will make us his own children, for he lo- for his soul loves us. The voice of God that burst out from his heart. Comes out from heaven and is filling the whole visible earth. It is now resounding here on earth. As a follower of Meishu Sama, we must respond to this voice of God and say to him. Together with everything, I return to heaven where true salvation exists. May your will be done, in the name of Messiah, which is one with Meishu Sama. I surrender all into your hand. If we can offer this kind of thought to God, I believe that the sonning of God. Will ripple through the world, providing immeasurable salvation and comfort. To those who are currently caught up in the whirlpool of anxiety and worry. Through our outgoing breath and incoming breath, may the salvation and comfort. Of the church bearing the name of Messiah be shared with all on earth. May all glory, authority and grace be returned to God, who is one with the name of Messiah. Thank you very much. So this message of Kiyosama is actually it's extremely deep and powerful. I was very moved uh when I read it, it is very encouraging. And at the same time, there is much to reflect on our, my own posture and my own way of seeing the world. And how much I need to change and really direct my heart towards God in this new phase. It can actually be divided into several uh study sessions, so I won't go into it. That much today, but uh just a few things that caught my, my mind just now as we were reading. Is Kiyosama talking about how it's important for us to recognize. That the forgiveness of God and the church bearing the name of Messiah exists within us. And then by each one of our own wills. Accept the forgiveness of God embedded in the name of Messiah. So it's not just recognizing that that church exists within us. But to accept God's forgiveness within us. Like he says here, let us by each one of our own wills, accept the forgiveness of God embedded in the name of Messiah. Just as Meishu Sama did, let us together with many people and all creation, return to heaven. And surrender all into the saving hand of God, for now is the time to serve in this work. So it's so clear that for us to serve God. Right now is by accepting this forgiveness and surrendering not only ourselves. But returning with all those who are connected with us, back to God. Through this church of Messiah that exists within us. And not only that, the next part was really uh also very interesting is uh within us. God's hand of Joray exists, there's not a single moment. When we are not used in God's divine work of Joray. Like I shared a few days ago in the morning prayer. Uh we have a very strong tendency, or at least I do, to say, oh, I didn't channel Joray today. Or I didn't receive Joray today. But in reality, not a single moment goes by where we're not receiving Joray from God. Where God is not using us in this divine work of Joray. So even in my saoning, I need to recognize that at that moment. When I feel those feelings that I haven't channeled Joray today, or I haven't served in this work of Joray, in reality. It's God showing me the very thing, the very attitude and postures that I have neglected God. Right? Because when we say, well, I haven't received Joray today, or I haven't served in Joray today, at that moment. I believe that God's light is shining through to show us the very thing. That we did neglecting God's existence within us, right? Because God is challenging every moment. Every single day, of every breath, we are serving in that work of Joray. So it's been a, a very deep point of reflection lately and then. Here someone continues here, Meishu Sama wrote the following hymn, the voices of the members burst out from their sincere hearts. Do they have the power to influence and change the world? Of course they do. And I think we covered this in a couple of study sessions back. And I believe that even my viewing or reading of this hymn was very superficial. Because Kiyosama here clarifies what this uh this hymn. Says and here he says, through this hymn, I feel that Meishu Sama is telling us with a stern voice. It's not nicely, it's not kindly, very stern voice. Doesn't the voice of God coming out from his sincere heart? Have the power to influence and change the world? Of course it does. So it's like Meishu Sama was giving us this kind of warning, let us recognize God. That is alive within us, in the center of our hearts. And recognize that God and that sincere voice of God. Sincere heart of God has the power to change the world. It's not us members that are doing that, but God and God's sincere voice that exists in the center of our heart. And he clarifies that by going deeper here and saying, our hearts are changeable. Always mixed with good and bad thoughts. But that is not all that we have. So as humans, I think we have a very uh strong tendency to see ourselves. And measure ourselves by the experiences that we have, the good and the bad experiences that we feel, right? And the thoughts that we have. But there's something deeper within us. Within us, at the center of each one of our consciousness. That sincere heart of God exists, his true heart exists. No matter what, God will save us. No matter what, God will make us his own children, for his soul loves us. So it's like uh the way I see it is like peeling layers of an onion, right? At the very core. Is God's heart and God's life and God is very alive. And now all we have to do is open up to God who is very alive and existing within us. The voice of God that burst out from his heart. Comes out from heaven and is filling the whole visible earth. For me, I think I've never really went that deep, right? To recognize that God's voice is resounding through the entire earth, the whole visible earth. God's voice is resounding through all of us, bursting out from God's heart. In the center of our souls, it is now resounding, resounding here on earth. As followers of Meishu Sama, and this is very, very important point that I, I feel. As followers of Meishu Sama, we must respond to this voice of God and say to him. So it's not just acknowledging that God is alive and God's voice is resounding through the entire world. We must respond to this voice of God and say to him, together with everything. I return to heaven where true salvation exists. May your will be done, in the name of Messiah, which is one with Meishu Sama. I surrender all into your hand. If we can offer this kind of thought to God, I believe that the saoning of God, not our saoning. Right? Not our thoughts, not our mind, but God's mind, God's saoning. Will ripple through the world, providing immeasurable salvation and comfort. To those who are currently caught up in the whirlpool of anxiety and worry. I've been receiving uh many questions from members, right? How can we help in this situation? We see that the coronavirus, apparently there's a second wave. Um they tried opening up restaurants and bars. And it seems like they're closing back down again because the cases are spiking up. So all this anxiety, fear, it's coming up again, resurfacing. And I think this time even stronger than the first time around and. And people have asked, "How can we help? How can we serve?" And I believe that Mesu Sama has left us with a tool and a path that is beyond the boundaries of our town, beyond the boundaries of our state, country. It's infinite and instantaneous. As Kios Sama is showing us here, if we can offer this kind of thought to God, I believe that the saoning of God, which is limitless, it's all powerful, it's everything, infinite. I believe that the saoning of God will ripple through the, the world, providing immeasurable salvation and comfort to those who are currently caught up in the whirlpool of anxiety and worry. I think it goes very much back to what we studied last week, right? Where Mesu Sama is teaching us about this peace and this state of mind where we can find true peace, recognizing that God is alive and God is using all that exists. As Kios Sama says, even this minute particles, right? Driving us to have all these feelings, all these anxieties, all these thoughts. God is using that to show us that we need to return to God. We need to learn to live a truly God-centered life. We need to be born anew as God's children. And because we are aware of this plan of God and how nature works, from that state of mind, that peaceful state of mind, we can surrender all of ourselves, along with all of those connected to us. Using these very words, we don't even have to think up the words. "Together with everything, I return to heaven where true salvation exists. May your will be done. In the name of Messiah, which is one with Mesu Sama, I surrender all into your hand." And with this simple, apparently simple prayer, but very powerful connection with God. If we can offer this kind of thought to God, the saoning of God will ripple through the world. Can you imagine what kind of, uh, privilege that we have at this moment? At the same time, an extreme responsibility to know this truth, but a privilege to be able to help all humanity return to God. An immeasurable salvation and comfort reach all those who are caught in this whirlpool of anxiety and worry, who are not aware that God is alive within the center of their hearts, who are not aware that that peace also exists in the center of their hearts and souls. So it's extremely encouraging way to recognize God being alive in this entire situation. But not only recognize that, to truly serve God in this new phase. Right? This is the true work of Jurei. Surrendering our saoning back to God is a true work of Jurei. It's how to reach infinite amount of people in an instant, in one thought, by returning that back to God. So I, I was very moved to receive this message by Kios Sama. And at the same time, it has put me to reflect a lot on how in my daily basis I am using my consciousness and my life as mine, right? How I still recognize that or think that the thoughts I'm having are mine. And I forget that they belong to God and they're here to serve God. So it's kind of making me, um, try at least to keep a closer guard on my thinking, on my thoughts and feelings. Not to judge them as good or bad, or should be thinking this, or shouldn't be thinking that. But to recognize that at that moment, those thoughts and feelings that I'm having is God showing me what I need to surrender by returning to that heaven that exists in the center of my soul, to be born anew with all these souls. So I think it's a extremely good challenge for all of us. And at the same time, it's a great blessing for us to, even if a little bit more. We can do that a little bit more every day. So yesterday I could only do so much. I only recommend so many thoughts. Today I noticed more thoughts, I noticed more feelings. And tomorrow, hopefully I can notice even more. And through that, I can increase my perception, uh, my conscious observation, recognizing that God is alive within me to return to heaven with as many people as possible, surrendering all of ourselves into God's hands. Not for my will or my prayers to be fulfilled, but for God's saoning to ripple through this earth, fulfilling his wish, his will and his desire. If anybody has, uh, any comments on what we've studied so far, any questions, please feel free to add in the text messages or over the phone. And, um, again, this material is available online, the video will be available. I recommend that we go back and reread and re-study as much as possible because there's so much here. I mean, I'm only touching a little bit of my reflections today with everybody. But I leave the space open for any other comments right now. So we have a, a very good question here. So from now on, all thoughts are gods? Um, everything belongs to God, right? Our thoughts, our breath, everything belongs to God. And I think that my, my understanding, right? And I can't say this a hundred percent, but God created our consciousness for us to serve God. Uh, years back, Kios Sama shared in one of the messages that our thoughts and our feelings are actually a mechanism for us to serve God. Right? For us to, I'm sorry, for us to communicate with God. So the way I see is, as God shines his light from within our soul, many feelings, many thoughts are shown to us. Those very feelings, those very thoughts, our postures, attitudes, everything that God forgave. Right? And God created this mechanism so that we can recognize what God forgave and return to heaven with God, along with all those who are connected to those thoughts, to those feelings, to be born anew as children of God. But as we look at thought, right? And as Kios Sama has been sharing in his hymns, God is alive in our saoning. And there was another hymn that actually I didn't share, uh, today. I believe I shared, uh, last week, but it was, uh, in May, where Kios Sama wrote, "Soning is God. God is light." Mesu Sama says, "Come to the light." Says, "Come to the light and you will be saved." Um, I'm pretty sure that's how it was written. It could be, I'm just paraphrasing, let me open it up, it'll be better. So I don't quote it wrong. One moment, let me pull that out for you guys. Give me two seconds and I'll share here. So in the hymns... So the hymn reads like this. "Soning is God. God is light. Come," says Mesu Sama, he says, "come to the light." Till this day, I think we as humans have been taking everything as it belongs to us, that our thoughts belong to us, our feelings belong to us. But even the way we dealt with God was the same, right? We, we prayed to a God that would serve us. It wasn't that we wanted to serve God. It was, I would do some service to God, or I'd offer something to God and God would fulfill my prayers. Right? So even our relationship with God was very upside down. And I think more and more, we're being shown the true essence of life, right? Which is God and that God is alive. So, um, yes, all our thoughts belong to God, but and God is alive within all those thoughts. And I think with that mindset, um, the way we live our lives changes, right? I can't just, um, think and feel now and not recognize that God is living through each one of those thoughts, that God is part of those thoughts. So I don't know if I, I really answered your question, but in that sense, I think that as we think, as we do, our posture and our attitude toward God will change. So, uh, one thing that Kios Sama shared in this message, right? Before we do anything, for example, we have a certain thought, I want to do some kind of project. Before we do that project, we had that thought, we have to communicate that to God. "God, I'm feeling this, this, this way. I'm thinking about doing this and this project. I'd like to return this thought to you. I'd like to return this idea to you. I'd like to ask your permission to do this." And then we do that project, right? We do whatever it is. And regardless of the result, if it's good or bad, we communicate that to God. "God, we just did this, or I just did that. I'd like to communicate this back to you and surrender it back to you." So I think it's a, a new way of living and building our relationship with God in this process. So I hope that kind of answered your question. If I made it more confusing, I apologize. But it's a very, very, uh, interesting observation, right? In that track of thought, um, I'd like to share a couple more hymns with you guys. I don't have them written here on the PowerPoint, but I think that this is very, very interesting way to actually go deeper. Uh, there's another hymn of, of Kios Sama from this month, and he writes this way. "Oh, Mesu Sama, after you were born anew, you showed us that the true essence of Jurei is saoning." Right? So we just read, "Soning is God," right? And the true essence of Jurei is saoning, so the true essence of Jurei is God. And then in the next hymn, Kios Sama writes, "How wonderful, yet fearful it is. You, oh God, exist in our breathing and saoning." So I think more and more, we are being nurtured by God to really recognize that God is alive in everything, at the center of everything, within us and within everything. And that relationship, that oneness with God and returning to God is really the, one of the biggest blessings I think humanity ever had, is to be able to know this true God, our Father, our Creator, and be able to communicate and return to Him and serve Him in this process of being born anew. So we are really, really, I think blessed to be in this path. But again, it's a completely different way of seeing the world. As Mesu Sama even said in that sacred word of illness, you know, give thanks to illness. Here we are thinking one way as a human being, human perspective, but when you start seeing it from a God-centered way of living, it's completely the opposite. And I think we're being nurtured to live that kind of life with God truly, for God's prosperity, God's happiness, for the first time ever in, I believe, the history of creation. We're having that opportunity to, to live that way consciously here on earth. So anyways, there's a lot here that can be researched, that can be studied. Um, I highly recommend everybody, uh, pick up a copy and study and read and all those feelings that we have, right? Before we read, while we read, after we read, let's surrender them to God. Right? Let's communicate that to God, recognizing that God is alive in the center of those thoughts and feelings. Recognizing that God is permitting us to feel that so that we can, together with all those who are alive within us, return to God and be born anew as his children. This is the way to serve right now. This is what God is asking of us to do, inviting all humanity. And we have such privilege to be part of this. Yet at the same time, many feelings come up and many questions, and that's okay. It's just to recognize that beyond those feelings, as Kios Sama shared today, beyond those feelings, beyond what we think is good or bad, or we understand what we don't, there's God's heart in the center of that. And through the name of Messiah, God is receiving all of that back into God's heart, giving everything a new birth. And I think if we can focus in that essence, um, all the other things will fall into place as we are serving God in this new way. So if there aren't any more, uh, comments or questions, I think we can end the study session for now. If anybody has a comment or a question afterwards, feel free to write down and we can maybe address it in the next study sessions to come. I'd like to thank everybody for joining. Tomorrow we have, uh, the study session in Portuguese. We're having daily prayers at 10:00 AM on YouTube with, uh, and Facebook with Reverend Felipe. Uh, I'd ask everybody to join. He's going into this material also and his feelings and perceptions, so it's a great opportunity. And at this weekend, we have the national service. It is Fourth of July weekend, but we have our national service at 11:00 AM Eastern Time, I'm sorry, uh, 2:00 PM Eastern Time and 11:00 AM Pacific Time. All are welcome to join us. Thank you very much and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Bonnie.